You're recording.
Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and Beacon, and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise with pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
Pledges of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First on is the proclamation for National Library Week. I do, yes, we have our representatives of Lacy Library here. As the chairman of the Ocean County Library Commission, I'm very happy to be able to read this. So, here we go here. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning and allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of all access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continuing expanding their collection services and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote sense of local connection, advance understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are the cornerstones to democracy, promoting free exchange and information ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and all library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. And now therefore be resolved that I, Timothy McDonald, Mayor of Lacy Township, proclaim National Library Week April twenty-third through twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the local library and to explore the wealth of the resources available. Come on down.
Both of you come up.
Mayor, you want me to take a picture of you?
Yeah, would you please?
Thanks, Peter. Watch the wire.
No tripping falls, please.
All right. Good job.
Thanks, Peter.
Would you like to make any statements or anything?
Go ahead. Tell us how long you've been there too, you know?
You can move that back to the center, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Seminatori. I'm the Adult and Information Services Librarian for the Lacy Branch of the Ocean County Library. I've been a librarian at the Ocean County Library System for six going on seven years at the end of May. It's a great place to work, and we love being a part of this community and Lacy Township. And we appreciate all the support that the Lacy Township and the Mayor Committee have given to the library. And we appreciate all the work that you do for us in advocating all the wonderful programs and events that we held at the Ocean County Library System. And I just want to say thank you for everything you do for us. And on that note, I'm going to pass it on to my leader of branch services at the Ocean County Library, Gigi Hayes.
Oh, good.
Hi, I'm Gigi Hayes, also quite short. Thank you all for your support and for giving us this proclamation. I hope that you all have your library card. If you do not, please come into the branch and get one. It is the best card in your wallet and it's free.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Just some real quick, you don't even have to go into the library to get a book out anymore, do you?
But you do need a library card.
You do need, you gotta sign up for a library card. Music and videos and everything else like that, you can just stream online.
Yeah, the Hoopla app is a wonderful app to utilize with the, and I believe, do you also use Libby or just?
Yes.
Yeah, both of them do wonderful things making, you know, the books available to everyone from everywhere.
There's, was it?
Veronica's our avid reader, so believe me.
You can read for movies, there's access video on demand for documentaries, yes, and Ken Burns, and Charles Holbeats.
Yeah, whatever.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's absolutely amazing. It's absolutely amazing. We're going to continue with the techno, doing the technology. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number two.
Okay, number two, Associated Humane Society Special Use Perp.
Associated Humane Society, I believe, is having their second, I believe this will be their second annual Lions Tigers and Beers event on Saturday, June tenth, from four to eight P.M. out at their facilities. This is, of course, for patrons over twenty-one plus. There are prices for those that would be your designated drivers coming to the event. So they are looking for permission to have this event since it's outside the scope of their normal land use approvals on that day. Please, yeah, motion?
Motion.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing else to add onto caucus, so we can adjourn this meeting and then go right into township, yeah?
Okay. All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant-
I need a motion to adjourn from this meeting. I apologize. Falling down.
Move it, second.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
All right. Take two. Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. All rise with pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. One with the silent.
Pledges of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh eight vacating all the right title and interest of the township in a portion of property.
In order to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, vacating all the right title and interest of the township of Lacy and a portion of Bell Street. The portion of Bell Street that we're vacating will be that portion that is between Newark Avenue and its Easterly Terminus with block eighteen thirty-seven point oh one, lot eight point zero seven. This is in the third phase of the Walters Development Affordable Housing Group. Once all, the street is vacated and this is all recorded, it will be consolidated into one large block and lot for that housing project. Motion to adopt?
Move it, second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh nine amending chapter two sixty-one entitled Swimming.
In order to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter two sixty-one dash thirteen entitled Swimming. This is to make some changes with regards to the Whippet. We will be changing some of the operating hours and the different open-to-the-public hours for the Whippet. We are also changing, there's an age that said eight in there and it needs to be seven. And those, and then the different sessions for the wristbands are moving from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars per wristband. And I think that was it on that.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten amending chapter two ninety-two entitled Stormwater Regulations for Pine Lands Areas.
Okay. In ordinance of the township of Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter two ninety-two of the township code of the township of Lacy entitled Stormwater Regulations for Pine Lands Areas, chapter two ninety-seven entitled Subdivision of Land, and chapter three through five entitled Zoning, so as to amend the municipal stormwater management plan and stormwater control ordinance to incorporate the revised stormwater management regulations contained in the Pine Lands Comprehensive Management Plan in accordance with the requirements of the Pine Lands Protection Act known as NJSA thirteen colon eighteen A dash one. This is all in accordance with the new regulations as it comes from stormwater. We have to do the one for the east side of the parkway, and this is for the one for the west side of the parkway. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven establishing a cap bank.
In order to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit into establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon four dash forty-five point fourteen. This is, relates to the annual budget, and that the municipality shall limit any increase in said budget to two point five percent unless authorized by ordinance to increase it to three point five percent. We do this annually as we're going through the budget process.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, second, excuse me. Second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh seven providing for various capital improvements and acquisitions of various capital equipment.
In order to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and acquisitions of various capital equipment, appropriating two million six hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the township of Lacy and the county of Ocean. This is our annual bonding ordinance. We had done a, a capital budget last meeting, and now this is the second reading of this bond ordinance. What this includes this year is acquisition of emergency medical services and equipment for Lacy EMS for four power load stretchers, acquisition of various public safety vehicles and equipment, including but not limited to police patrol vehicles, new computers, Northwest Barnica Fine Phase Three. There's a portion of that is a grant three hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars from New Jersey DOT, traffic lights at the intersection of Lake Barnica Drive and Haynes Street, various road improvements to Stephanie Court, improvements to engineering and design for improvements to Cranberry Hill, dredging, engineering for dredging. And we are at our seven-year cycle to start our dredging projects again. Those are the items that we are bonding for this year for this budget. Second reading, open the floor to public comment?
Public, have any comment here?
See, not motion, close before.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-two-three certifying the compliance with EEOC.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, certifying governing body compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidance on the Consideration of Arrest and Conviction Records in Employment Decisions under Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. This is a resolution that we now need to adopt when, as we go through our budget process. Can I have a motion?
Move it, second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-four authorizing the self-examination of the municipal budget.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the township of Lacy to assume the responsibilities of conducting the annual budget examination. We are allowed to by law to do a self-exam every so many years on our budget, and then it goes back to the state for them to review. We are in the self-exam process for this period. Can I have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-five introducing the twenty-twenty-three municipal budget.
All right, so I'm gonna get my stuff all ready here, here. Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, introducing the local municipal budget of the township of Lacy for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. General appropriations for municipal purposes, thirty-nine million one hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-two cents. Reserve for uncollected taxes, one million four hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight cents. Total general appropriations is forty million five hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, less the anticipated revenues of twenty million two hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The amount to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget is twenty million three hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. The public hearing on this budget will be April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, on or about six-thirty P.M. in this room here. What does this mean for the budget this year? So, we are going up four point nine cents in this municipal budget on the assessed home of three hundred thousand dollars. That means it's going up twelve dollars and twenty-two cents a month. On a five hundred thousand dollar assessed home, that means it's going up twenty dollars and thirty-six cents a month. What is in this budget? Obviously, there is five police officers, some additional staff members for other departments as well. There is a purchase of a fire truck for the Forkett River Fire Company, which is, we had reserved three hundred thousand last year. We have another nine hundred thousand dollars to pay this year towards that truck. That would take us about two years to get the truck, even though we're gonna start paying on it this year. It includes about eight police cars, in addition to other items for the police department. In this budget, there's also four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars going to the Lacy Township Board of Education to help offset some of their losses that they have received in their state funding this year as well. So I think this is a very good budget that's been put together very well, and we're getting a lot accomplished and hiring much-needed police that we need in our police department. Okay, I have a motion to introduce the budget.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-six authorizing a developers agreement.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing execution of a developers agreement with Cover Bridge Sports Plex Corporation. This is the condo development, which is where old Nico's sushi place used to be on Route Nine there, block three fourteen, lot twenty-two, twenty-five, and twenty-six. This developers agreement is to outline the two units that they need to put in for affordable housing, that we want them put in at the sixth building and the eleventh building. They can't wait to the very end when all their other market rate units are done. So they have to mix it in as they go along. Motion?
Move it, second.
You can't do both, Steve.
She's a little quiet tonight.
All right, so Peggy, you'll second it, okay?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-seven authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate pursuant to NJSA fifty-four colon five dash fifty-two point one. This is obviously covering the cost of a duplicate tax sale certificate on tax sale number two thousand and three zero one two zero. The holder of the tax sale certificate needs to pay a hundred dollars to receive a duplicate. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty, twenty, yeah, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-eight authorizing refund of deposit bonds.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-nine authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of eight hundred thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus, meeting minutes from March ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
Move it.
Move it, I'm sorry. Second, okay.
Thinking about things.
Will you two guys get your act together, really? Have all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve township, meeting minutes from March ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for Rotary Club of Forkett River, Forkett River Tuna Club, and Lacy Soccer Club.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Comments from the committee?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, you got an add-on?
I have two add-ons. So, in order that we can still conduct business until our budget is adopted, I need to amend the temporary budget. So it's a resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for emergency temporary operating budget in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon four dash twenty. So I need to increase that to get us through until the end of April.
Move it, second.
Mrs. Juliano? I know that, you can't even, yeah. Mrs. Juliano, that's a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
All right. Next is resolution one thirty-two. This is a resolution to township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, supporting the township's application for congressionally-directed spending for the completion of Railroad Avenue Extension North and South Phases Two and Three. So what am I doing here? Through your congressman's office, or Senator Booker's office, or Senator Mendez, Mendez's office, they have what's known as congressionally-directed spending, which they can make application to the government in order to try to get funding for various projects. So this year, we had decided to, let's take our chances, let's see what we can do so we can complete Railroad Avenue on the south side of Lacy Road and the rest on the north side from Musket to South Street. So with that being said, we need to adopt a resolution and send it with our package by the end of business on Tuesday of this week. I have supporting letters from the county, from our ninth legislative district offices, from local businesses in town, plus Berkeley Township and the County of Ocean. We are seeking six point one million dollars to finish this project, and hopefully we could be awarded the funding to get this done. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Comments from the committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two, two items. This is the time of year when we, when the emergency services do their installation dinners. It's where they change their leadership and, you know, move some of their positions around. And I just want to thank all the volunteers for all our emergency services, the Forkett Fire Company, Banbury Fire Company, Lenoka Fire Company, Lenoka EMS, and Forkett River, Lacy EMS. Just want to thank them for volunteering their time. That's a great help to, you know, everybody that lives in town. And I also want to thank their families for, for supporting all those volunteers. You know, it's a lot of hours and it's a lot of time, and I truly want to thank them. And also, we, I don't think I got it today, but I have the Tax Collector's Report. It's, they, our tax collector puts out an annual report. It's full of actually really good historical information. Just, you know, gives us the highest taxpayers in Lacy, our collection rate, what our total levy was. And it's hard to imagine back in nineteen ninety-eight, we were collecting approximately twenty-nine million, and now we're collecting in twenty-twenty-two, ninety million. So the inflation there is shocking. Anyway, those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Committeewoman Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple things, if you don't mind, just deal with me right now. First of all, just, we received a letter from a couple that just moved into our town about the whole building permit process, and they just wanted to thank us for everybody's kindness and help along their process. So I think that's really nice to go to our, you know, for our community development department, which is a nice thing to hear. It's always good to hear good stuff, too. I want to make an announcement about a spring fling adoption event that's happening at the animal facility up in Jackson. It's on April the first, from one to four. So it looks like it's gonna be a fun event with all the doggies and cats and stuff there. That's always-
You can't go, Peggy, because you're gonna bring home something.
I know, I'm not allowed to go because I'll only bring home more, that's the problem. On a, just on a note, I just want to say that this is my first time working on a budget, and it was really a large experience. And I, you can't help but say thank you to each and every one of us. And Lyndon down there, it's just amazing, the work that goes into this. So it's not like a, a five-minute job, that's for sure. But again, I just wanted to bring that up. And then, on a nice note, today at school, I work for the Lacy Township Middle School. I'm a paraprofessional at the Lacy Township Middle School. Four years ago, I lost my job, full-time job, to the cuts that were done back then. I decided to just go part-time anyway. It's fine, it works for me. But of course, it's been a tough year for, tough couple weeks for our, our township school people. It's really been a lot for them to have to deal with what's been going on. But anyhow, we had the kindness of a suggestion by Committeeman Mark Dykoff and, and myself. We spoke to, and Veronica LaRae, we spoke to Jim Noller from our Lacy MUA, and he was kind enough to look in and see if he could get us some money to help out. And he did, and it's just a wonderful thing. But anyway, the LTA president sent a little note over. She just wanted me to read this to you. She says, Dear Jim Noller, Lacy Township Committee and LMUA, on behalf of the Lacy Education Association and our paraprofessional staff, we would like to thank you for your help and generosity with this. You have helped the school, students, and the staff of Lacy Township. It's through the support and caring of local communities such as yourself that makes a huge difference and a positive impact on us. So I just, I wanted to share that with you. I just thought it was nice that you took the time to write it and hand it to me at work today. So I thought that was really nice. And then one other thing I just wanted to say about the Lions Tigers and Bears. I went to that last year, so if anybody's got the opportunity to go, it was a fabulous event. They did a beautiful job at the popcorn zoo. So if you have the time, you should try it. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Committeeman Dykoff?
Thank you. A couple things. I did attend with the members of the committee and the mayor the Forkett Fire Company installation dinner the other night. I want to thank them for their hospitality. And they gave out awards throughout the night, and, you know, some of the awards were the most calls that they were having. And I think it was five hundred and sixty-something calls.
Yes.
Two gentlemen tied, Kevin Flynn and Dennis Barklow, was it? No?
No, no, no.
Who was Barklow?
The other Barklow.
The other Barklow.
The other Barklow.
Greg Barklow.
Greg Barklow. And, and of course Kevin Flynn, he said, well, it's only because I took vacation or something.
That he missed out on getting more.
And walked out this year because he's coming back. But anyway, it was a very funny evening. And we've got another one this Saturday in the local harbor. I'm looking forward to that. Of course, I'm, I'm looking at, we have a budget document, municipal data sheet, and it tells us all about the expenditures and appropriations and so on and so forth. And as you start reading through it, you get a better understanding of it. And some things jump out to me. Insurance, you know, general liability from five seventy-three to six oh one, workers comp from six oh five to six sixty-five, employee group health from four million, four million two hundred and forty-five thousand to four million five seventy-eight. You know, just, it's, you know, and then you look at, at our contribution for pensions. And these are all things that we have no control over. They go up every year. There's nothing we can do. And that's not to mention, of course, contractual obligations, gasoline, so on and so forth. So, great job on the budget to all involved. Committeewoman Juliano mentioned the LMUA. So, for those of you who don't understand, the LMUA is what we call an autonomous body. They operate on their own, and they, and they're subject to different rules and regulations than us. And some municipalities, against better judgment, and I've spoken to them, they, they absorb their LMUA into their township. And they do this as a money grab. Because LMUA has, they have surplus and so on and so forth. And we, it might have been suggested over the years, and I know for one, I'm totally against it, because we have an LMUA run by commissioners, particularly Chairman Jim Noller, who do a fantastic job. You've got some really smart individuals on the liaison, and Mr. Juliano's co- liaison. And they, they're very much businesslike. The school, of course, same thing. The school's an autonomous body. They have their own budget. We do pay for some of their services, garbage pickup. But again, you know, they're on their own. And, you know, it, I guess it all comes out of the same pot, but they're all subject to different rules and regulations. And we're fortunate that the LMUA is run so well. There's a statute that allows them to donate five percent, or donate, it's not donation, to transfer five percent to, to the township fund. And we have been taking, taking advantage of it over the years. It would be helpful to us, but we, you know, we feel that it's better to leave them to their own. They, I want to make sure I'm not wrong, and I don't think I am, they've kept their rates stable for a number of years.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I think it, one year, they actually reduced the rate.
They actually gave us back something.
You know, and, and, and they've made steps to actually bring in revenue by digging new wells. And of course, we have very clean water, and they do a fantastic job. So, listen, the schools have been just attacked. Our schools throughout the state, some parts of the state, have been attacked by, you know, for whatever reason. I don't want to fault them. I'm sure they have their reasons. But this year, it got crazy. I mean, it just got, you know, they were anticipating two million, which was, I mean, to try and cut a budget to a million, and I've discussed this with Ms. LaRae, if she had to cut that much, she would sleep less than she does now. She's just, I'm sure they would figure it out, but guess what? She would She wouldn't be happy about it. And so what we did was, we reached out to the LMUA, as, as Miss Committeewoman Juliano mentioned, and sat down with Chairman Yoler, Co-Chairman Mike Michelli, Director Ed Wolf, and said, hey, you know, listen, here's what we want to do. Can you, you know, listen, can you afford it? And why, why I say that is, well, what good is it taking away from them if they have to raise rates? It's like, it's just, but they said, no, we have the surplus, and we can do it, and, you know, we're, we agree with you wholeheartedly. Jim Yoler, of course, is an ex-school board member. If I remember, he, he served with Mr. Kennis's father, is that correct, Stephen?
That's correct.
Yes, it is.
So he, he understood more than, than me. So we want to thank them, and it's, you know, we like to work together, all of us. So that's all I have, thank you very much, Mr. Lynn.
Second, Committeewoman, Committeewoman Cortolo?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a lot of thank yous to go around tonight, and I think it's appropriate to start with our Fire and EMS. Like my colleagues have said, it's an honor to work, work hard on this budget. Our folks, people that are here and that aren't here tonight, do that hard work, Administrator LaRae, and Linda, so many people, too numerous to name. And that's why we're able, because of that hard work and working that budget out, that's why we're able to make purchase, like a fire truck that's going to save lives in this town, frankly. That, that's what it's going to do. So it's an honor to be a small part of that, and thanks to them, because they're putting out the fires, and I'm behind a desk, so. And they've been to my house one time in the last twenty-five years, so I'm very, very grateful to, to those good folks. The schools, I'm one of the liaisons to the schools with the mayor, and the mayor will talk to, share about the schools, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Committeewoman Dyckoff, Committeewoman, everybody here that had a hand in trying to ameliorate this issue. We've all met with either school board members or Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority membership. Jim Nola, the chairman, is a retired New Jersey State Trooper. He's a gem of a person in our town, and he has been for many, many, many years. Anyone that's met him knows that without hesitation or reservation, anyone would say that about him and that door, as Committeewoman Dyckoff has just talked about. We are in the process of, of helping our schools out, the LMUA did it. Thanks to the Ninth District, I work with Brian Rump, shoulder to shoulder, forty hours a week. He's kept me appraised, he's kept the mayor appraised, as has the whole Ninth District, and they've been great advocates. I still personally don't like what's happened to our schools. I do think it's political. I do think it's unfair, and I do think it's taking from Peter to pay Paul. We need to find a better way to, just to help fund these schools, that you just can't come into Ocean, Monmouth, and Middlesex County, and the M O M, the MOM counties, and disperse it to other locations. It's not right, it's happened here for too many years. Just want to commend the mayor, like I said, he and I met with the superintendent, I want to thank the superintendent. I felt it was important to speak, and I, and I respect and admire the autonomy of the school board, but I did want to speak and stand in solidarity with them at their school board meeting. Not as a committee person, but just as a concerned person in our town. And you say all the time, you want to kill a tree, you start at the roots. And when you take millions of dollars away, it hurts our kids, so it's personal. So I just can conclude my comments with thanks to everyone. Everyone that my colleagues have named tonight, our mayor, our committee, certainly our employees, the school board, the superintendents, and the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Couple of things here, our budget, four point nine, and that's down from where it was when I talked to Veronica four weeks ago, I think it was?
Yeah, four weeks ago.
About, about four weeks ago, when she told me what the number was, and I said, absolutely not, we got to get it lower. Her and Linda, and Linda's staff went to work, and we got it to four point nine. But let's look at what we're buying for that four point nine. How about five police officers? This town, we know it, everybody knows it, has been understaffed in police officers for about five or six years now. Got hit very hard with some retirements, and they deserve to retire. And we were unable, due to the financial situation, to replace them immediately. So we had to wait a few months before we could replace them. Well, we're not doing that, we're biting the bullet, we're going to put five people on this year. And that's where a lot of this is going to, and of course, emergency services, the fire truck, and then my committee members have talked about. The other one I want to do thank, Committeewoman Dyckoff and Committeewoman Juliano for the LMUA, and all those people with the LMUA for the four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And let me explain that. We'll get the money, but it will not go to the schools until July. The reason for that, it will be part of their twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget, which starts, they're on a fiscal year, we're on a calendar year, so they can't take the money until, because they take, they take it now, it gets tossed into this year's budget. So they have to wait until July to take the money, and we're glad to do that. I also want to thank our Ninth District, Senator Connors, Representative Go, and Representative, uh, Rump. I can't, I've been on the phone with him so much, he kind of forgets. When this all came down, I don't know about the other committee members, but my phone lit up. People, who we called, what's going on? And you saw what happened at the last school board meeting, where, you know, a lot of teachers are supposed to get laid off, and, and we'd had a meeting, and I had talked to somebody named Rump about this, and there was some movement at that point in time about that. And I just want to thank Governor Murphy for coming to his senses. He went kicking and screaming, I'm sure, but you cannot boast about a ten billion dollar surplus, and at the time, same time, cut school districts. It just doesn't make any sense. So that is that. I also want to thank Senator Gopel, is it? Senator Gopel, he led the fight on this, the Monmouth County. I did not get in touch with him, I tried a couple of times, but I'm sure he was swamped. I want to thank him for all that. A lot of work went on this, a lot of work went on this, and, and it came down pretty quickly. Veronica talked about our last, on the rail, the railroad extension. This is super important that we got on this list. I don't know if we're going to get it this year, but it's on the list, and now we can start moving forward. We'll be, this year, we get it next year, a couple of years down the road. Just getting on that list is an achievement. So I want to thank Veronica for all her work that she did on that. The installation dinners, they're great. It's great to see these firemen and these emergency services people come out. They let, they let their hair down a little bit, cut the rug up a little bit, and you know what? They deserve it.
That's right.
They do a great job here, and I, I've always said this, they let me sleep at night. Because I know they're going to answer that call no matter what, and that's, that's a good thing. I think that's all I have. Oh, no, I do have, I got, just like Mrs. Juliana got a thank you note, I had, I went out to get the mail this morning, first afternoon. And in this was, in my office, in my post, uh, mailbox, was Mayor Timothy McDonald. I'm going, uh-oh, should I call the police and have them come open this, or what? Or what?
There was nothing white and powder in there.
No, there was, no, there wasn't. And what it was, it was a thank you note from a, a paraprofessional from the school, just thanking us for what we have done. I don't know how she got my address, but she did, but that's okay, it's in the phone books, it's everywhere, I don't really care. But, you know, they are very grateful, and when we met with the school superintendent, we said, look, got to save jobs. We don't want it for maintenance, we don't want it for money that we're giving from the LMUA, don't want it for anything but jobs, and not administrative jobs, teaching jobs and paraprofessionals. You can't have a school without teachers, you can't have a school without paraprofessionals in today's age, you got to have that. Now, they're down to about under nine, about under a million dollars cut with the four hundred and five, with all the money that they're supposedly going to get back. It's not set in stone yet. He hasn't signed it, but what I understand, they'll probably go to the governor's desk next week, and he'll sign it. So keep your fingers crossed, keep your prayers going for it, because there's so much at stake here. There's so, and if you want to live in a great town, we're trying on our end, the school's trying on their end, and you got to have a great school district to have a great town. It's as simple as that. That's all I have. Let me open this up to the public. Does the public have any comment here this evening? Come on down. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Amber Leeann, I'm a former Lacy Township resident, current Berkeley Township resident, and partial visitor to Sonar in Lacy Township.
Okay.
So I just kind of want to say some things mainly about the offshore wind project. Noah had spoken about it last meeting, and I just have some things that I wanted to say. So according to the marine mammal stranding center, there have been around twenty-five strandings this year alone, and those numbers should be enough to raise immediate concern. An increase in vessel traffic, ocean noise, sonar disturbances, and admittance changes to the seafloor are all consequences of offshore wind that could disturb marine mammal behavior, including in our township. I know that you had said there wasn't really much concern, because we can't really see the turbines for our township. Still, the projects continue to move forward without detailed scientific evidence that offshore wind development is safe for these ocean animals. There is zero commitment to precautionary principle. NOAA continues to claim that these vastly increasing whale dolphin deaths have no correlation to offshore wind activity. However, where is the concrete evidence to back that up? Until we see a halt in the continual uptick of marine mammal strandings, I refuse to give up or stay silent. Given how quickly this project has progressed, and considering the wake it's left behind just from surveying alone, none of our concerns should be taken lightly. There needs to be a halt in the immediate progression of offshore wind development until further scientific evidence can prove that the direct effects of surveying and construction are or could potentially cause to a marine mammal population in ecosystems. Your neighboring towns have voiced their concerns regarding the implementation and progression of these projects, including Tom's River, Berkeley Township, Stafford Township, and over twenty-six other local townships, calling for an immediate moratorium or temporary prohibition of sonar, sonar surveying, and offshore wind mapping. This is unnecessary so that further scientific study of offshore wind impacts on marine mammal wildlife can be conducted. While it's perfectly fine to support the industrialization of our coasts, which I do, it's not perfectly fine to accept limited information that organizations including ORSET, NOAA, and BOAM are providing at best. What amount of time has been allowed until the investigation of marine mammal deaths before another whale, dolphin, or seal washes up dead on our shores? You should be just as, as concerned as the public, if not more. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Shame not washing the floor.
Come on, Barry, you got to move fast.
Five seconds, come on. Five seconds. Barry Bender, I'm not going to say it. Discussion about the school, I saw something, and I didn't get a chance to read it in the patch. Did they give us some money back? Did he put some money back?
Yes, he put it back.
About three point six million out of the four, so they're down about one point three.
Right.
And then we're giving them four fifty-six.
There was a, there was a story, I guess it was in the patch, and I downloaded the information, and he gave a spreadsheet showing all the school districts and what went on. And anybody who says it's not political, I got a bridge for you, okay? But what really stuck out to me, and, you know, you say, and I'm not going to say party names, but the non-governor's party, eighty-five percent of the cuts were in those, in those districts. What stuck out to me, though, and it's really funny, the one that, not percentage-wise, but dollar-wise, that took the biggest cut was Jersey City. And, and, and I'll tell you, I, I have my theories, guess who's thinking about running for governor? Let's play politics with friggin' kids' education. It makes me want to toss my cookies.
With kids.
That's all I wanted this year. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Barry.
Any other comments from the public?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
No. A resolution, motion to go into executive session. Resolution Township Lacy County, Bochus State of New Jersey, authorize the convening of executive sessions. Executive sessions discuss matters of personnel, contractual matters, and anticipating pending litigation. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Seconds.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
No further, aye, no further business.